Well, then I will call this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board to order on April 12, 2022. The time is 6:05 PM. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else other than Harbor Media recording this evening? I am not seeing anyone. I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein and myself, Joe Fisher. We are expecting Bill Ramsey to show up shortly. We do not have any minutes to approve this this evening. And so I'm going to go off agenda for just a few minutes. Last week, we learned the sad news that Dr. Edward J. Schreier had passed. Is Joyce his wife with us? I don't see her name here. Tom, do you see if Joyce is there?
I don't see her name.
Yeah, either did I. So Ed Schreier, he's best known and loved for having served the town for nine years as a three-term member of the school committee. In 2020, when he attended his last meeting of the school committee, the chair of the committee at the time, Michelle Eyre, stated, quote, "His dedication to Hingham Public School students and his knowledge will be impossible to replace." And then Michelle turned to Ed out of desperation and said, and I quote, "Ed, please don't change your phone number in case we need to call you," unquote. So unfortunately, our opportunity to call Ed Schreier has now expired. Many in town will miss him. All of us benefited from his commitment to our children and to our community. I've asked three of his colleagues and friends to share their thoughts with us. And first, I'd like to call on Carrie Nie, who is the current chair of the school committee.
Thank you, Joe. On behalf of the school committee, we were deeply saddened to learn that longtime Hingham resident and former school committee member, Dr. Ed Schreier, passed away on April 5th at age 79. After serving for three years in the U.S. Navy Dental Corps, Dr. Ed spent over 40 years as a pediatric dentist, serving countless South Shore children and adolescents. Dr. Ed was an active volunteer in town, serving nine years as a member of the Hingham School Committee. Ed worked closely with the committee and administration to successfully execute the high school fields renovation and the new Hingham Middle School building. He particularly loved the outdoors and grounds and always brought insightful comments and suggestions that influenced the projects and upkeep. As the chair of the long-range planning subcommittee, Ed brought relentless energy, enthusiasm, and cheerfulness to capital planning, during which time he developed a deep understanding of the capital and facilities needs of the districts. He continued to share that knowledge even after his last term on the school committee concluded. Ed was also deeply interested in education. He served and he started and served as the chair of the Special Education Subcommittee. And in this role, he attended many CPAC, which is a Special Education Parent Advisory Council, meetings to try to understand the issues facing special education students and their families and to improve student learning. He also served as a founding board member and school committee liaison to South Shore SNAP, which is a special needs athletic partnership. Additionally, Dr. Ed served as a member of the Foster School Building Committee and was instrumental in the preliminary planning for the new Foster Elementary School building. He also served as the school committee liaison to Plymouth River Elementary and on countless other committees. Most recently, he continued his service to the Hingham Public Schools by volunteering to serve on the School Department Master Planner Review Committee with the same enthusiasm and cheerful demeanor that he always demonstrated. Ed was a tireless advocate for Hingham students and staff, and he will be missed. Our thoughts are with his wife Joyce and his family, including his two daughters, Rachel and Emily, their families, and his six grandchildren. I also just wanted to thank John Ferris for helping put these thoughts together. Ed and John worked very closely on all of the projects that were mentioned.
Carrie, thank you. Your your thoughts, your perspective is comforting. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Carol Falvey, our town clerk. She's a dear friend of Ed Schreier and served with him on the school committee. Carol.
Thank you, Joe. I first met Ed as my kid's pediatrician, a pediatric dentist, back when they were young. And he had the best wonderful manner as a dentist for kids that were a little nervous about attending, going to the dentist, and he would wow the kids with his theme-related garb. I mean, it really helped to distract them. And he next ran into each other when we were running for school committee in 2011. And we became fast friends from that time. We both won the election and sat next to each other for years in the school committee where we would, you know, consult with each other, talk over problems. I learned so much from Ed and his perspective on life. He and his stories and I would always hear of chain of command from the Navy and how important that was to an orderly structure to life. So he was a problem solver. And as Carrie pointed out, accomplished so many things while we were on the school committee together. We really became lifelong friends during this period, and he was always there to support me and my family. And as recently in my bid for town clerk last year, all my signs are in his barn. I mean, it's just such a such a close connection and a wonderful person. I was heartbroken when I heard from Rachel that her dad had died. And I was heartbroken for his family, for Joyce, for Rachel, for Emily and their families. I was heartbroken for the town because, as Carrie pointed out, he's such an amazing supporter of everything we do. And I was heartbroken for me. As Sean Ferris said to me, Ed is family, and he really is. He will be sorely missed by all of us, and thank you.
Carol, thank you. Finally, I'd like to call on Ray Estes. Ray is the current vice chair of the School Building Committee, a former member of the school committee, and a close friend with Ed Schreier. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, all the things that have been said are things that have been going through my mind for the last week. He touched so many lives in our town and beyond in so many profound and lasting ways. I've really struggled to find the appropriate words for a week now, and I still struggle. You know, some of the things that I think of when I think of Ed are his boyish enthusiasm. You know, whether it was, you know, putting together campaign signs together in his barn or investigating the next project we were undertaking or following up with somebody about a particular interest of his or texting me to remind me that he had a bag of fertilizer that he wanted to give me. And I still have this handwritten notes, a whole page long, about what to do at different times of the year with fertilizers and landscaping tips. It's really remarkable. You know, his generosity with his time, his thoughtfulness with everybody. Tom Mayo told me a great story a few days ago that I'll share briefly. That Tom first started with us about five years ago now. And Ed happened to meet him and asked him some questions. Ed always wanted to know about you, some personal things about you, what you were like, what you were interested in, what did you read? And I guess Tom shared with him a particular author that he had been reading recently. And the next morning, Tom showed up at his office, and on his desk was the next book by that author. He's not quite sure how it got there, but he knew it was Dr. Ed. That's just just a remarkable story that speaks volumes about the kind of thoughtful man that he was. It was so enjoyable for me to watch how devoted he was to Joyce and his family. I had the opportunity, and I've been fortunate to get to know many of his family members over the years. And it's clear that as much of a loss that we're all experiencing, their loss is so much, so much greater. We use, you know, we were use words like these that I was just saying, describing, to describe him. And they have particular meaning and significance, really, when talking about Ed and the man that he was. His loss is really unspeakable. There obviously, you know, death is a way of life, and we all experience it in different ways at different times. But the suddenness of this loss and I think the meaningfulness of his relationships with so many of us. You know, it's really a profound and difficult thing to take. And really, more than anything else personally, he was my great friend, and I'll miss him terribly.
Ray, thank you. Ed touched so many of us, not just for town business, but personal relationships, and we all feel it. There will be a memorial service on Saturday, May 7. The time, I believe, has not yet been determined. It will be at the Second Parish Church to be followed by a reception at the Hingham Heritage Museum. We send our condolences to his wife Joyce and his family. Thank you. After that, it's tough to turn to the mundane, but we need to proceed. Thank you all for who came for Ed Schreier this evening. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day Walt wine and malt beverage license to Lucy Hancock for Beyond the Books, a celebration of the Hingham Public Library to be held outside at the Hingham Public Library on Friday, May 6, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. And is Lucy here?
Here.
There you are. Good. Good to see you. Would you, Bliss, briefly describe what is being proposed?
Yes, I will. We are having an event called Beyond the Books. It's a fundraiser to promote funding for our materials, our programs, our books. And it's going to run actually from 5:30 to 8:30. That was an incorrect number on the agenda, but it's only half an hour longer than you had stated. We're expecting 200 people. We have sold a good number of tickets already and many sponsorships. And what else do you need to know? It's under a tent on the lawn with Kate's Table catering the event. They'll have three raffles with prizes that take you beyond the books. There are 12 trips, and you can win one of those 12 if you win the raffle. So, Joe, are you gonna go?
I am. Can you tell me what you expect in terms of attendance?
I think we're hoping for 200, and that excludes the vendors and the staff who will be helping. But right now, we sold about 150 tickets.
Great.
So get on that website and get yourself a ticket.
Yes. Chief Jones, I believe you are here. Have you reviewed this? Do you have any concerns?
Good evening, Joe. I have reviewed it. I have spoken with Lucy a number of times. She is going to have a detailed present at the event, and I have no issues with it all.
Great. Are there, before we go to that, Liz, any questions?
No questions. It sounds like a beautiful event. Lucy, I know Kate's Table does a great job. And just, Joe, so you know the time is right on the application, so no questions.
Tom, have you heard from Bill?
I have not.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on the application? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion. And Liz, I'll note that the time for the motion should be changed to 8:30.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Lucy Hancock for Beyond the Books, a celebration of the Hingham Public Library to be held outside at the Hingham Public Library on Friday, May 6, 2022, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM.
I'll second that. We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe? Aye, and Bill is absent. Lucy, should be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you. Anybody else who wants to take it, get on the website and get one. It's gonna be a great one.
Lucy, tell them what the website address is so they know where to go.
Oh, well, just Google Hingham Public Library.
Okay, it's right there.
And right on the first page of the library website, there's a big banner that says, Beyond the Books. You click there, and it'll take you to ticket sales, sponsorships, details on where the trips are that we're offering for prizes. So, oh, there's Bill. Just in time.
Yes. One second here. So, Michelle, am I authorized to share my screen?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so let me do this one minute. See here. Okay, Lucy, is this it?
Yes, that is it. Very nice.
Right here. Beyond the Books, here, right for the for the ticket sales.
You go to tickets, you find out about the raffle. Raffle tickets are $10 apiece. You can buy lots of those. You can even buy 10 tickets for 75 or six for 50, I think. I've forgotten the exact number. But we are selling tickets online and also selling tickets at the library. So if you do come in to do something at the library, you can buy a raffle ticket or an event ticket.
You realize that most of us, when they see the word overdue associated with the library, it instills fear in us.
We no longer have fines, as you know. One of the things we're hoping is we raise enough money on events like this that will offset any fines we might have collected in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Joe, do you mind if I jump in just real quick on something?
Before you do, I want to welcome that Bill Ramsey has joined the meeting. And Bill, we did just take our first vote approving the event at the library, and I'm sure you wouldn't have objected if you were here.
Absolutely not. Thank you for welcoming me. I would have wholeheartedly supported it. Good luck with it, Lucy.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, Tom.
I just want to take this quick opportunity. She'll kill me later, but to embarrass Lucy. And I know Lucy is heading out of town sometime soon. We are all going to miss her greatly. But Lucy, you've been a great champion of Hingham for a long time. You were AdCom Chair when I was fresh in this role, and you walked me through process. You taught me process. You held my feet to the fire more than once, as you do with all of us. And you made things happen. So anyway, thank you very much. You're going to be greatly missed by me especially, but I think by the town as a whole. So anyway.
Thank you very much. I will say you can take Lucy out of Hingham, but you can't take Hingham out of Lucy.
Tom, you didn't tell her about the ball and chain that?
We're gonna have Chief Jones set up roadblocks up the road at the town line.
Got it. Thanks. I appreciate the thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for the Spring Fest at Ware River Farm to be held at Ware River Farm on Saturday, April 23, 2022, from 9:30 AM to 4:30 PM. And I believe we have Michael Snowdale with us and Smith White, who's the director of the she's one of the South Shore trustees, I believe. Yes, so if you could, I'll start with Michael and then move to Ann. If you could just explain what is being proposed.
Joe, I don't think Michael is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I told you his name.
But I do see Miss Smith White.
Okay, so then, Ann, the floor is yours.
Hi, everybody. So I am the South Shore Portfolio Director. This event at Ware River Farm is our traditional spring festival. It's special this year because it's happening the day before Earth Day. So we're going to be having composting workshops and sheep herding workshops and earth-friendly vendors. The barnyard will be open with educators and 4-H kids stationed there to teach about the animals, and we'll have crafts and games and food trucks and beer trucks. Another thing that's really special this year is the first hour from 10 to 11 is going to be a sensory-friendly hour for families and individuals living with autism. So it's a special year, and we're really excited. We're hoping a lot of folks from Hingham will come.
So this is appropriate. You do know that towards the end of the meeting, we will have a proclamation on Arbor Day.
And Earth Day.
I'm sorry, right, Arbor Day and Earth Day. So we are glad that this is before us. Liz, any questions?
Just one question. And I noticed there's not an alternate date, so there's no rain date. Is that correct?
Okay.
Great. And you're estimating 2,000 people throughout the day?
Um, I think that's ambitious. I would say probably 1,200 to 1,500 is what we're hoping for.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
I have no questions. Familiar with these events, and good best of luck with it, Ann.
Thank you.
And I should have asked the chief first. I know he's reviewed the application. With this many expected to attend, are you comfortable with how this is going to be managed, Chief?
Good evening again, Joe. Yes, I reviewed the application, and I am comfortable with the event and the plans they have in place.
Okay. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? And so how do people get to go to this thing? Do they? Is there a website? Is there information about how we can go? If I've got a friend, where do I tell this friend to look?
If you, probably the easiest thing is to Google Ware River Farm, and then just click on the trustees link. And then there's a thing that you have to scroll down. There's a things to do page that has all of our events. Buy tickets that way.
I am looking as we speak. This is one of the benefits of having a virtual meeting to see if, in fact, that's there. And I am not seeing that. So we want to make sure that people can attend.
See, can I put the link in the chat, maybe?
Yeah, so actually, I am going to. I'm going to share my screen again. So this is where we should be?
Is that?
This is the trustees' website?
Yes, so scroll down.
I'm scrolling down.
And if you keep scrolling down, there's a place to click that says things to do. So keep going. You have to go a long way.
Feel like we're on a hike.
There we go, upcoming events. So there's a lot happening in April. If you click on, you see the little button that says view more. Go up a little bit. I just know. Okay, so click on that, and then the next screen, it'll be on there. We have a lot of programs happening for April vacation, so we have to sort of slide by all of those.
Okay.
Going just a little bit farther. Up, you gotta click on the number two down here.
You are making it difficult for?
I'm sorry. I should have given you. There it is, Spring Green Festival at Ware River Farm.
Okay. Okay, and this is where people can get the information and view more. Just so you know, I mean, we sometimes get contacted by residents saying, I wish I knew, and I didn't know how to get it, get the information. So now the world knows how to do this. Great.
Excellent. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We've got no public comments. I am prepared to accept the motion.
I'd like to motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for the Spring Fest at Ware River Farm to be held at Ware River Farm on Saturday, April 23, 2022, from 9:30 AM to 4:30 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. You are approved and looking forward to the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our event, and it looks very similar, is to consider approval of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Stephanie Aquino for the Spring Fest at Ware River Farm to be held at Ware River Farm on Saturday, April 23, 2022, from 9:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Stephanie, are you here?
I am here, and I was not as prepared as everyone else. I'm at Ocho Cafe for dinner.
Okay, did I pronounce your, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
The last name's Aquino, but that's all right.
Okay. So I suspect it's very similar to what we just heard. Anything you'd like to add?
Nothing. I'm so excited. It's my first time there. I think it's gonna be so fun.
Great. And Chief, any concerns with this application?
None. It's the same event as last time, and I'm comfortable with the plans that the trustees have in place for the event.
Terrific. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
And Bill, any questions?
No, just a comment. I think it's great that Ware River rotates through the local craft beers, craft breweries. You know, it's nice that they use Untold, they use Barrel House Z, they use Vitamin C, a lot of the local ones. So I know a lot of the brewery owners have ties to Hingham, so it's great to see that they rotate the different breweries that have these events. So it's great. It's good to see it, and they're all good. So.
Yes.
We definitely appreciate it. We need it right now. So I want events are available to us.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? I am seeing none. I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Stephanie Aquino on behalf of Barrel House Z for the Spring Fest at Ware River Farm to be held at Ware River Farm on Saturday, April 23, 2022, from 9:30 AM to 4:30 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. Approved. April 23 should be a great day, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to consider appointments of Assistant Harbor Masters and Deputy Shellfish Constable. The potential candidates we have are Joseph Driscoll, Michael McHugh, Danny Sousa, Raymond Brayu, Michael Riley, and John Algrid. And Ken Corson, our Harbor Master, should be with us, as is Chief Jones. So Ken, I'd like to turn this over to you to explain what is being proposed and to introduce the candidates.
Sure. Thank you for having me here this evening. There's essentially two different positions. There is the position of Assistant Harbor Master, and then there's the position for Deputy Shellfish Constable. So for the position of Assistant Harbor Master, there's several candidates. Joe Driscoll, that position is the head assistant Harbor Master. And that's a full-time position. He's been in it for a number of years now. So looking for his reappointment to that position for three years. And then the other positions of Assistant Harbor Master are part-time, part-time seasonal, and those are for Michael McHugh, Danny Sousa, Ray Abreu, and Michael Riley. The other position of Deputy Shellfish Constable, that's for John Algrid. He's currently our clerk, our Harbor Master Office clerk. So this is a position that we really haven't filled in, or at least during my time here as Harbor Master. And to my knowledge, we haven't filled this position with a previous Harbor Master. So with the rise of the shellfish in the harbor and shellfishing actually coming back and the diggers digging, I'd like to give him this appointment so he can help out with managing our shellfish resource. So he'll continue on in his position, but he'll have some, he'll have the ability to assist with the management of that resource. So he'll stay in his current position, Bill, but he'll have some additional functions if needed. That's kind of the summary of what I'm asking the board to do here, and I guess if you have any questions, I can expand upon it.
That's great. Let me ask, assuming that these individuals are appointed, when would their term begin and when would it end?
So it's a three year term and I believe the way I'd like to see it happen is that we just can, so their terms, or at least three of them, their terms expire, I think it's in June. One of them had already expired. I think Mike Riley's already expired. So his would start now. And the other three would just continue on when they expire in June for three more years.
And this is a question, Ken, both for you as well as Tom Mayo. What are the budget implications of making these appointments?
So we have, we have a budget of funds to, to basically to pay the staff. So regardless of the number of staff we have, and we have X amount of funds and that's what we use to, to pay them. So when we do the schedule, we look at the amount of budgetary funds we have and we budget and staff accordingly.
Remember, Joe, these are, these are part time positions. Ken brings them in as needed.
Except for one is full time and he has a, you know, a line item set for him.
Right. So none of these items would be a surprise for those who look at the budget.
Correct.
Yep. That's my understanding. Liz, any questions?
Well, thank you, Ken, for the explanation and, and the, my memo. I don't have any further questions, Joe.
Bill.
I had one quick question, Ken. I know if we do make the motion to appoint Mr. Algrid as Deputy Shelfwrist Constable, are you by law, the actual constable?
That's correct. As Harbor Master, I'm also appointed the Shelfwrist Constable for the town.
That's what I thought. Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Chief Jones, do you have any comments on what's being proposed?
I don't. I know all the employees, they, they all currently work for us and performing well in their duties. So I have no, no further comments.
And this is, this is for Ken as well as for the chief. Is there a how do I say this? What sort of review is done for those who are being reappointed? Is there a new background check that's done? Or is there additional reviews in terms of performance? And am I correct to assume that whatever review has been done, these candidates have passed with flying colors?
Yeah. So there's a performance review that I do every year for staff and those reviews have been done and everything was, was excellent. So no, no issues there.
Great. Are there members of the public with comments or questions concerning the Assistant Harbor Masters and the Deputy Shellfish Constable appointments? I am seeing none. So I'll accept the motion.
Make motion to reappoint Joseph Driscoll as full time Head Assistant Harbor Master for a three year term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I. Next motion.
I will make a motion to appoint Michael McHugh, Danny Sousa, Raymond Abreu, and Michael Riley as part time Assistant Harbor Masters for a three year term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I approved. And one more vote.
I'd make a motion to appoint John Algrid as Deputy Shelfwrist Constable for a three year term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
And another roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I unanimous, all the reappointments and appointments. Ken, excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is for us to hear the Town of Hingham Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2022, and this is an update. And Tom, I'm going to actually turn this over to you and then you'll introduce who will be making the presentations.
Sure. So this is a statutory required plan that we put together. It's done in this case with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Chief Murphy and the Fire Department were closely on it. I know Deputy Le chance had a hand in it as did, as did Emily Sullivan in the Conservation Department. So I think I'll turn it over to the chief to walk us through everything. And then I believe Ms. Herbst from the MAPC is here to speak to what was done. But Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So real quick, like Tom had kind of mentioned, we are required to update our hazard mitigation plan every five years. The plan looks at natural hazards around town, weather related events, flooding and things like that. So in order to us to receive certain federal funding to, to mitigate some of those risks, we have to identify them in this plan that's required every five years. So we contracted with MAPC. They did our last update five or six years ago. We contracted with them again to do for this current update. We made a team up of different departments around town, like Tom said, police, fire, emergency management, the planning department, building department, Harbor Master, Board of Health, Public Works, Conservation, Town Engineer, basically everybody. People with local knowledge, historic knowledge that really, really put the plan together. I know he's not on right now. I really want to thank Randy, Randy Sylvester. His historical knowledge on a lot of this stuff was instrumental. I was kind of the, the project liaison for this and this was my first time. So Randy was very, very valuable to me. So I do want to thank him for that. So Anne from MAPC is on with us. I think she has about a 10 minute presentation or so for us. I'll turn it over to Anne.
Yeah, Anne, please.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need to screen share or are you?
Yes, and I will do that now, I hope. Is that working?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. So thank you to the select board for the opportunity to present the, the work really done by a team of town staff. I'm an environmental planner with NAPC. And as already stated, we're, we're presenting the, the final draft of the updated plan and it will be available for comment for another week. I'll, I'll give you the link for that to see it. And then we submit it both to MEMA and to FEMA for approval. After FEMA approves the draft plan, it actually comes back to the select board for adoption. So tonight's presentation is informational. It's, it's not the night that you need to take action. And I, I see your agenda's long, so I will, I will move through this fairly quickly. So we mentioned that we had a broad team and really under his leadership, we, we worked on the plan together. So you can see it. We did really cover all the bases of people who would have the knowledge we needed to be involved. So hazard mitigations plans focus on natural weather driven occurrences. So not things like terrorism or, or chemical spills. The town has other plans for things like that. It's also not an emergency response plan. The focus really is on taking preventative steps to reduce the impact of natural hazards. And hazard mitigation planning started in the year 2000 with the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act. And, and the goal really was for all municipalities to across the country to have a plan. And it is not actually technically required of the municipality. But the, but FEMA does have a significant carrot and that is in order for the town to be eligible for all their grant programs, you'd need to have a plan in place. So the team identified potential risk areas. So this includes known flooding areas and a number of places where there's the potential for brush fire, not necessarily where there has been brush fire. In our region, flooding is the most frequent hazard and that, that is certainly true in, in Hingham as well. So one of the things we do is map all sorts of critical facilities. We include disaster response sites, municipal facilities, places that could need services. We overlay that with what we know about flooding and the other hazards that we mapped. And it just gives us an opportunity to analyze vulnerabilities. We also take a look at where future development is anticipated to take a look at what vulnerabilities may be there. And for the first time, this plan has incorporated future climate risks. So I'll just take the next couple of slides to show you the kinds of things that we look at. So this slide shows tree cover in high heat areas in Hingham. So the pink areas identify higher heat locations. It was done using remote sensing on a, on a hot cloudless day. And so the pink is somewhat arbitrarily represents the hottest 5% of, of land in the MAPC region. And typically these are places that have more paving and roof tropes, fewer trees. You can see Hingham has really pretty significant and substantial tree cover, but there's some high heat areas, mostly commercial, often though it's schools. We think about this partly because people who don't have access to air conditioning can be vulnerable to illness from heat stress, whether or not really they're in a high heat area. So this map took a look at flood claim locations from March 2010. We had to enlarge them for privacy requirements, but some people may remember that we had very severe flooding in March 2010. It led to a federal disaster declaration. And we think of March 2010 as sort of a, an example of the type of flooding predicted to occur more often as the climate warms. Meaning extreme rainfall amounts falling in the winter is rain rather than snow on ground saturated with snowmelt and while vegetation is still dormant. So in Hingham, only 6% of the claims were actually in the FEMA 1% chance flood zone. That's sort of typical across our region that we found that. And I think that really highlights the issues that all urban and suburban areas struggle with in terms of stormwater flooding. We took a look obviously at sea level rise projections and this is the map that was used for Hingham's fairly in-depth study conducted in 2015. We also wanted to think about who would be impacted by climate hazards. So one thing really to note is that not everybody is affected equally. So some of us are more physically susceptible to impacts, particularly heat, including young children, pregnant women and older adults, as well as people with chronic illnesses. So you can see that, that, you know, we project a high percentage of adults or see a high percentage of, of older adults living alone. And while Hingham remains a predominantly white community, it has become more diverse and you can see that there are differences in health outcomes by race. So Hingham's black and Latino populations are hospitalized at a, at a higher rate than whites or Asians. I think reflecting sort of a longstanding what we understand about social inequities can lead to differential health outcomes. And again, we think about heat because it's, it's a real asthma trigger. And finally, of course, people who have limited financial resources will have more difficulty preparing for and recovering from hazard events. And again, even though Hingham is a relatively high income community, roughly 20% of the population is considered low income and 6% below the poverty level. So this is a partial list, a little bit of sort of highlights of the project priorities that have been identified for the next year. We organize them by risk. It's really the heart of the plan. They include a range of activities from infrastructure projects to natural resource protection to regulatory strategies outreach, in some cases additional study. You can see the inland flooding includes specific projects and a focus on identifying culvert risks. The coastal projects also focus on specific risk areas, particularly the harbor. And a study of options for Bear Cove and Beal Cove. Other things identified with the need for a generator for town hall to, to both to serve town hall, but also for its function as a warming and cooling center. That's the kind of thing that FEMA funding could, could potentially support. So we tree studied, we thought about tree strategies, both for heat management and also in terms of their hazards for down trees, both for, for people and property. Also talked a bit about water storage management that was a big issue in, in the MVP report and strategies that, that the new, Hingham's new managing of the, of the water system will undertake. And also outreach for Lyme disease. So again, anything that is in the plan is something that potentially at least the, the town could look to FEMA for, for financial support to address. So the draft plan has been on the town website. You can find it by going to the emergency department webpage. We welcome anyone to send comments for another week by April 19th. Those will be included in the plan and if there are specific new suggestions, they'll be reviewed by the team. And I'm certainly also happy to take comments or questions now. So thank you.
Joey, Joey, you're muted.
You missed my wonderful words here. So Deputy Chief Le Chance, anything that you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no, just like to say thank you to everybody that was involved. It was a long process, but like I said, we had a great team of town employees that helped me get through this process. Some questions for Anne. I know you said people have until the 19th for public comment. Then from there you send it off to MEMA?
Yes, it goes, I'll send it directly to MEMA. They'll review it. It then goes through a second review to FEMA. Sometimes they have sort of little editorial comments. If they do, we'll correct those when, when they're all set FEMA basically gives it their stamp of approval, which is approved pending adoption. And then it will come back to the select board and we'll, we'll provide you with an adoption motion to, to make it official. And, and then it'll go back to FEMA and they will give it their official blessing.
So I know timeframes with the federal government can be a little unknown. What, what would you, what would you anticipate for a timeframe?
Well, I know, I know that the town is, is interested in, in, in immediately pursuing some grant opportunities. So when I send it to MEMA, I will give them that heads up and typically, typically it is hard to predict how long it's going to take them. But when they understand that potential funding is in the balance, they, they, we, our experience has been they're able to get it done. So I would hope that by the end of June, we would have approval.
Excellent. Thank you.
Chief Murphy, anything that you would like to add?
I just wanted to echo Deputy Le Chance's, you know, thanks to Anne and her team from MAPC and all of the staff from the town of Hingham that worked on this and anyone else that contributed to it. So thank you.
Thanks.
I'd also like to echo the thanks to the town team. I just guess I want to let the select board know that you're, you're well served by the group that worked on this.
We know we're well served. We're proud of these folks. Don't, don't, don't boost their ego more than. But I, I do have a question about the group and the review because one part of the town that is very much involved in, in some of the responses to hazards is the Hingham Municipal Light Plan. Particularly with down trees, weather events. And I'm wondering to what extent that they have had an opportunity to review and comment on, on the mitigation plan.
They didn't have much directly in involvement. A lot of that was through DPW and Randy and with, with the tree department. There was some talk of, you know, the electrical lines that come into Hingham that go through to serve to hull. I believe Emily Wentworth, correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, we talked about the was it National Grid had a plan to come in and clear some of the, the trees over the main lines coming through. Was Emily on?
Yeah. Sorry Lou. Actually, it may have been Emily Sullivan and or Lonnie Fornier. I think there was a filing with the Conservation Commission that tipped us off to that. So there were some loose references to.
I, yeah, I do think that came from Lonnie Fornier who and, and I know one of the you know, goals in the plan is for, for increasing resources for tree management. Cause in almost all suburban locations, and if you look at your tree map, there's, there's reasons why that can be an issue.
Yeah, but it's, it's not just tree management. It's a supply of power. So I, if we can make sure that there's an outreach to HMLP and I'd have similar comments with respect to the Weir River Water System. I didn't see that they were directly part of this review. You did talk about the, you know, the, the water supply, but that's the company that really needs to the entity that, that needs to have their input heard. And then finally, I, I would ask, to what extent was the school department involved in this review? Because when these events happen, they are directly affected. And I'm thinking of Foster School, which is, which is in an area where flooding is likely. And to what extent that there are responses involved. And I just want to make sure that the school department has been informed and has been given an opportunity to review this as well.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely reach out to them.
Okay. So that's HMLP, the Weir River Water System and School Department. Liz Klein. Comments?
Thank you to everyone who worked on this. I appreciate reviewing the report and, and your presentation as well. I noticed, as you mentioned, most are weather related emergencies, but I did notice at the end, the COVID-19 is listed as well. So are there other mitigation strategies for pandemics or, you know, other, other things related to COVID that you foresee needing to plan for?
Um, I, COVID actually isn't something invasive species was there and Lyme disease, which I, COVID actually isn't something invasive species was there and Lyme disease, but I maybe I'm mistaken, but I don't, it's not a topic we covered because it's not considered a natural hazard. It really is. It's all weather-driven. I apologize. There was some confusion.
Okay. And what sort of feedback are you looking for before the 19th? What would be helpful?
Well, I will warn you that the report is about 120 pages long. So I'm, I, I think probably what people would be most interested in is, is looking for the section on mitigation items. In other words, the things that the town is proposing to prioritize for the next five years. I would, I would guess that that would be of greater interest. We'd be happy to have any feedback, but I, I do want to be realistic with people's time.
Sure. Okay. So that's the intent, right? To have the mitigation kind of like an implementation plan in terms of timeline and then is the expectation that we would secure grant funding to implement those items?
So you'll see many items there. FEMA actually requires something in every, under every category, even if it's not a high priority of the town earthquake, for example. So there are many items. There's not an expectation that the town will make progress on all of them typically. You know, some things get done and some things don't, but, but they are the items that the town staff identified and they and things there potentially are eligible for funding.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Before I turn it to Bill, just Liz to follow up, I think what you were looking at is the top of page 12 of the report where COVID-19 is listed as one of the disasters. So that is.
Oh, okay. It is, yeah.
I, I thank you very much for that clarification. I, yes, we are required to list every federal disaster, but it's not considered a natural disaster for, for, for the purposes of the plan. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey?
And thank you for your work on this and thank you to Deputy Chief LeChance and your team as well. You know, I think as a board, we are taking steps to deal with weather issues and climate change. We're taking steps at the harbor, defensive steps at the harbor. We are moving forward with hiring sustainability coordinator, just to name a few things, what we're doing in town. But you know, going forward over the next, you know, five, 10, 15 years, I see every facet of our municipal governance going to be involved with this fight in terms of dealing with weather-related disasters and climate change going forward. So this is great and looking forward to the final report and hopefully getting some grant money to help us in this battle ahead. But thank you.
Thank you. Tom, and I'm going to ask Tom, Michelle and Art if either of you or any of you have comments from the town's perspective on this.
The only thing I'll add is that I just want to remind everyone, Chief Murphy and his team with Deputy LeChance, Deputy Levinson and others and the success they've had in getting FEMA grants. A lot of, a lot of that is predicated on reports like this and and studies like this being in place. So this is a great project and we will, I can say fairly confidently, we will realize benefits from this, significant benefits from this, from this work. So thank you Lou for everything you did and you as well.
Michelle?
Nothing to add. Thanks for everyone's work on this.
And Art?
All I would add is an important part of completing a plan like this is to look back at previous plan and identify what's been done. And I think that in my brief participation in the process, we saw that there was, there has been sustained attention to the plan and a lot of it has been implemented in the previous, over the previous years and that reflects, you know, great ongoing attention from the entire team. Thank you.
Great. And I do see our harbor master Ken Corson is still on the line and the harbor is in many ways, the epicenter of some of these activities. Ken, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't have anything particular to add. I think it's great that we're getting this done because we do have clearly some significant changes taking place at the harbor relating to the weather changes. So I think it's great that we're getting this done and it's a great, it's a great process.
Great. Any member of the public comments or questions on this draft report? I am seeing no hands raised, which means Ann, you did a superb job. Thank you, and we really appreciate the efforts. And I think Bill said it best that this is an area that not only the select board, but many boards, many volunteers will be focusing on in the months and years ahead. So this is critical to the town. Thank you again for your efforts.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, it is 7:00 PM, is to consider approval of the request of LSF Hingham LLC doing business as Legal C Bar 96 Derby Street for an alteration of licensed premises. And I believe is Donna Cruz here? Do I see her?
I, I don't see her name on the list, but I do see Victoria Maguire and Caroline Hesper representing WS Development, the property owner.
Oh, great. So Emily, do you want to take the lead on this? This is for Legal C?
Yeah, I'm happy to do a brief introduction, but you know, and WS can back me up. The Legal C Restaurant up at the Derby Street Shops is seeking a permanent alteration of their licensed premises in order to maintain essentially what the select board has previously approved through the OTS temporary policy. So that allows 30 of their current seats to be flexed seasonally from indoors to outdoors in part along the shared sidewalk and in part within a portion of the parking lot that would result in the displacement of six parking spaces. I can confirm that the, the planning board and the zoning board have both approved, or excuse me, the planning board in this case, approved a parking permit and a site plan to allow this also on a permanent basis.
And which means they've looked at the parking and they believe there's adequate parking to accommodate this?
Yep, WS Development, they track their parking supply routinely as part of their ongoing permits with the town. So they demonstrated they're somewhere between four and, you know, north of 500 spaces available during the months where this outdoor dining area would be operating. It would not be operating conversely during the month of December when there is very little excess of supply.
Got it. Do we have a representative from the company who would like to, to address us?
Hi, everyone. Victoria Maguire from WS Development. I'm joined by Carolyn Hesper, the GM at Derby Street Shops and Mark Hayward from Legal C Bar. Emily did a great job summarizing our requests tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
She always does a great job summarizing these things. And we really appreciate your participation this evening and we recognize how important these sorts of changes are for not just your restaurant, but other restaurants as well. Liz, any questions?
Just, just to confirm that it's not adding any additional seats, the flex seating means if there are tables outside, then there's reduced seating inside. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We monitor our cap on seating very closely. And so all of our tenants, including Legal C, know that if they flex seats, they can't go above their approved number.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
This is Mark here from Legal C Bar. Sorry, I just got permission to speak. Yeah, our cap is 193 whether it's inside or outside and we'll be maintaining that.
Got it. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
No questions, Mark. Just great to see you doing this. It's going to be a nice addition to Derby Street and people walking around up there and great job.
Thank you very much.
And I do not see our police chief still on the line, but Tom, am I correct that he's reviewed it and no police concerns?
Yes, that's right.
Great. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? I am seeing none and I'm prepared to accept the motion on the LSF Hingham LLC application.
I will make a motion to approve the request of LSF Hingham LLC doing business as Legal C Bar 96 Derby Street for an alteration of licensed premises in accordance with the application of, for alteration of premises information filed with the town of Hingham on March 24th, 2022 and subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
I.
Bill?
I.
And Joe?
I.
We are approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is to consider approval of the request of Locales Taco LLC doing business as Locales Taco E Tequila, 6 Crow Point Lane for an alteration of licensed premises. And I think that I see Scott, Scott here on the line?
I am here.
Oh, there you are. So are you the one to walk us through this?
Absolutely. Yes. For the record, Scott Golding from Drew and Tatia Morgan. Also here is Douglas McGregor and Brian McLaughlin, who are the principals of Locales Taco LLC and Brian McLaughlin is also the license manager. So we are here for an alteration of premises. This is similar to what you just heard for Legal C Bar. Locales Tacos has operated under the OTS approval you granted them last July. They operated successfully last year. They're seeking to essentially keep the, the same area, same number of seats to be able to flex seasonally to have outdoor seating within the aid parking spaces that you guys or the board previously approved. We worked closely with Emily as well as the rest of the board and as well as the planning staff. We have received a modification of the site plan approval for Crow Point Village, a modification of the special permit A3 for the park in between those two properties as well as a special permit A2 granted by the CBA related to the restaurant, which they all approved the outdoor seating. The planning board made in a finding that there were sufficient parking based on the peak demands as well as Jeff Dirk's traffic review that was actually done originally as part of the original site plan review done in 2020. So the board was fine with that. They added some conditions which included as far as the special permit A3, a look back, but otherwise there were really no issues. So they're just seeking to kind of carry forward with what was previously approved and we're hoping to make this permanent. So I can answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, because I do see the planning board's site plan review and then the zoning board's special permit. And finally, it was the, the decision by the planning board on the special permit A3.
Yes.
So it looks, it looks to me as if you've got a complete package. Do your clients wish to add any comments?
Sure if they do, but I'm happy to let them speak. So Brian, go ahead.
No, I have no comments. I appreciate all of this. I'm looking forward to a great summer. So thank you very much for participating.
Great. And Tom, again, just to confirm that our police department has reviewed, I know traffic has looked at it, that everyone is comfortable.
Yeah, they have, yep.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Just a quick question. I am familiar with the setup I've beaten out there. So are there, there's barriers or the Jersey barriers around? Is that, well, is that correct?
Yes, there will be. Those are part of the approval. It'll be the same setup as, oh, sorry, sorry. Continue. Ah, yes. So the barriers that were set up last year as part of the OTS approval will continue as part of this approval. There will be the, the barriers that will, those will actually be removed in the wintertime, but they will be in place anytime, certainly that there is outdoor seating and the entire licensed premises will be surrounded by fencing.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you.
Bill?
Brian, good to see you.
Good to see you too, Bill.
Yeah, you know, as I told you last fall, when you talked to me about this process, you know, the only thing better than having your tacos is eating them outside on a warm, warm summer day. So congratulations. It's great to see you and Doug doing so well as a business. So happy to support you guys tonight and the congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the help and support.
Great. Emily, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Oh, I think everything relevant's been covered.
Yes.
May I ask a quick question and not to be real into this? For, for, and this is out of curiosity and not to take too long, but for special permit stuff like Cinco de Mayo or other spots where we will need additional seating or we'd request for additional seating, could I still put in those one-day permits and go through that whole process using that outdoor space? That's just out of curiosity, as we know Cinco de Mayo is kind of coming up, but even for next year or whatever it may be.
I believe the answer is yes to that. Scott?
I would like to be able to speak with Sharon and, right? And with Brian on his plans, but I believe the answer would be yes as well, so.
Exactly what I was going to suggest. Sharon needs to be a part of that conversation. I don't see why there wouldn't be.
Right, right. So, so the longer answer is you need to go through the process, but there's nothing that you're doing here this evening that would prevent you from doing that.
That, that's what I wanted to know. That's, okay, good. Yeah, great.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request of Locales Taco LLC doing business as Locales Tacos E Tequila, 6 Crow Point Lane for an alteration of licensed premises in accordance with the application for alteration of premises information filed with the town of Hingham on March 18th, 2022 and subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
I.
Bill?
I.
And Joe?
I. Approved. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you at your place of business.
Me too. Thanks for, okay, thanks for coming. Bye-bye.
The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of an agreement with Hingham Access and Media Inc. doing business as Harbor Media. Or in the, in the alternative, a one-month extension of the existing agreement. And I'd like to start by turning this over to Tom Mayo, who will introduce us to what's being proposed. And then I want to make sure that we have a chance to hear from David Jones, the Chair of Cable Advisory, as well as Laura Burns, who is the Chair of Harbor Media. But I will start with Tom Mayo.
Great. Thank you very much, Joe. So just as a quick kind of background and I'll turn it over to John in a sec for some, if he wants to put any color and detail into this, but regarding the, what we're really doing here is renewing an expiring contract. This is a five-year contract as the last one was. It's a grant agreement in essence that's funded solely by Comcast and Verizon fees. We are required to use those, that, those funds, that, those fees on public education and government coverage through our PEG Access Community Channel, which is what Harbor Media operates on our behalf through this agreement. And I think it's important to note that, you know, through this, through this agreement, what, what we were trying to design was a, a system that was going to allow for clear communications between the Cable Advisory Committee, the Select Board, Harbor Media Team and all, all with the intent of improving and continuing the, the great product that we get from Harbor Media. And, and you know, that's the real, that's the real gist of this kind of an agreement. And there's a lot of detail that goes into it. John, I don't know if you want to cover any of the, John Cofflin, if you want to cover any of the the larger points?
John Cofflin is the town's attorney here. Yes.
Just, just quickly, I mean, it's a renewal, as Tom said, of a, of a five-year agreement that has expired and is kind of, is on an extension right now. We got a lot of input from both Harbor Media and from the Cable Advisory Committee. We took that input, we updated the contract language, I think, to make it more applicable to what's actually happening in the day-to-day operations. So I think it's, I think the form is a better form than the last one. I think the agreement's a good one. I think it has the support of both the Cable Advisory Committee and Harbor Media. It has a couple of new provisions. There's a new private grant agreement for private productions. About 100,000 a year will go out into the community. People can apply for those grants and try to improve some of the public access programming. There's increased reporting requirements. So overall, I think the language of the agreement's a little bit tighter and I think it's, I think it's a good agreement. And there was a lot of help from John Rice and Mike Leary and Laura Burns and Michelle Balcone. So I think it's ready for approval.
David Jones?
Hi, thanks for, I'm the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee.
I'm the chairman of the, uh, Cable Advisory Committee. Uh, a couple, two of my team members, uh, participated in the, the consulting with, uh, John and, and Tom on, uh, doing this five year renewal. And, uh, we had a meeting, uh, yesterday and I'm pleased to announce that, uh, our committee, um, office are unanimous support for, uh, for the agreement. We're all agreement that this is the best way going forward. Uh, my, my overall take on it, it's, um, the agreement sets appropriate oversight for the Harbor Media operations is as well as, as John had mentioned, the creation of an innovative Hingham, um, program fund which deliver high quality original programming over the course of the, uh, the contract term. And also where we have in it now, uh, agreement that encourages more participation by Hingham members to enhance, uh, media training as well as the creation of more membership generated public access video programming. So overall, we're really looking forward to working with Harbor Media on the implementation of the key provisions in the agreement and I continue to ensure that, uh, Hingham produces the best practices we can for local cable access. And I really appreciate the, all the support that I've gotten from the board, uh, the Select Board and, uh, and John. Harbor Media has been great to work with on this. I'm really looking forward to this.
And thank you, David, for your work. I, I see John Rice is here. Is there anything that you wanted to add? Well, you better unmute yourself or we'll never hear you.
How to do that, but here I am. No, we're, we're, we're very excited about the, uh, the progress that we made and it was, um, and Tom and, and John really helped craft the agreement and the language after we, um, came up with a, a number of innovative ideas. I think the program fund is going to be an outstanding innovative thing that not very many, uh, uh, systems and, and we, we should be a leader in the, in this field once we get this in place. So I'm very excited about that. And, uh, I think Harbor Media, um, you know, will, will really benefit from, uh, some of the provisions that we've, we've, we designed in there and, uh, we'll have more of a cooperation and, and oversight. And, and of course, uh, you know, in terms of this agreement, the implementation of it is going to be what's going to be key and, and part of the, uh, the agreement is that, you know, we, we will have a little bit more oversight about how it's done with reporting and, and that kind of thing. But I think the, uh, the, the staff and, uh, Michelle has done an outstanding job getting Harbor Media on the right track right now. And, uh, so we're, we're happy with the progress, uh, we, we, they've made and we're hoping that, um, we'll continue to make more progress.
Terrific. Thank you. Laura Burns, I believe you are the Chair of Harbor Media.
I am Laura Burns, 479 Main Street and the Chair of the Harbor Media Board of Trustees. And I just want to say we're really looking forward to serving the town for another five years. We appreciate the opportunity and thanks for all the hard work that's gone into this. And especially want to thank our Executive Director, Michelle Balcone, who is here tonight, who, uh, keeps everything going. And, uh, thanks to the town for this opportunity.
Yes, Michelle, thank you. Uh, you're not going to turn out the lights on us, will you? Not, not until this meeting's over at least. So Laura, what is the status? Has there been a vote of Harbor Media to approve this agreement?
So the status is that there has not yet been a formal vote. We have, excuse me. We had a me, a board meeting on Friday to look at the draft that had come to us on Wednesday. We suggested, uh, two changes, which, uh, John spent all Friday incorporating into the agreement. Thank you, John. And, um, we received that draft on Friday, but I, I didn't have enough time to call another board meeting between Friday and now. So I have polled the board, um, by email and I can, I can assure you that the board is prepared to vote to approve the, uh, agreement, but, uh, we'll be doing that at our regular board meeting, which will be Friday morning.
So at this stage, we, well, there's every indication it's going to be approved. It has, it has not yet been approved. So from a procedural standpoint, uh, this board would not be prepared, the select board would not be prepared to move forward to confirm a group agreement that has not yet been approved. Although we would want to do that as soon as possible at our next scheduled meeting. So what I'm suggesting is that we extend the current agreement, um, so that we can, which has been approved by all parties, uh, and then ratify this agreement, uh, the new agreement, once it has been approved by Harbor Media. John Cofflin, is that consistent with your understanding of procedure?
Yes, and I think we have a, we have a very short extension. We've done twice before. So I think we can prove the same thing again, Joe, for whatever time period you need.
Great. Liz.
Just fine.
Okay, Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but thank you to everyone involved. I know it was a tremendous amount of work to, to analyze the process and, and really be creative about new initiatives and, and different ways of working together. So thank you.
Yes. And Bill.
No questions. Appreciate everybody's work that went into this.
Yes, and, and it has been a while. And Laura, I appreciate your patience. Um, you and I have talked about this many moons ago.
I'm not sure how patient I was. Going to take that all back.
We're still here.
We're still, yes.
Michelle did meetings on her vacation.
Are there men, any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept a motion, uh, and this would be the extension motion.
I will make a motion to sign the extension to the grant agreement between the town of Hingham and Hingham Community Access and Media Incorporated, doing business as Harbor Media effective until May 15th, 2022.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I, extension approved. And hopefully at our next meeting, we will finally approve the new agreement. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda, we actually have a three proclamations that the Select Board is going to be, uh, reviewing, uh, it's not my, uh, anticipation that we'd be taking public comment. Uh, but we're going to go through each of the proclamations in turn. So the, um, first proclamation, uh, I would like to, uh, take the honor to proceed with. And that is for the Town of Hingham Education and Sharing Day. Whereas Hingham is a community that is committed to excellence in education, recognizing that equality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country and our society at large. And whereas Hingham recognizes the important contributions of its teachers, paraprofessionals, school administrators and staff in assuring high quality education for our children. And whereas April 12th, 2022 marks what would have been the 120th birthday of Rabbi Manachum Schneerson, the Lubavitcher Rebbe, a leader who was devoted to educating people worldwide and who demonstrated a profound respect for diversity, inclusiveness and equal justice. And whereas Rabbi Schneerson recognized the importance of building character and moral values as well as intellect. And whereas in 1978, the United States Congress established his birthday as a national day to raise awareness and to strengthen the education of our children. And whereas, beginning with President Jimmy Carter and continuing annually with every president through and including the current presidency of Joe Biden, a federal proclamation has been issued declaring Education and Sharing Day USA and celebrating the work of Rabbi Schneerson as a thinker, leader and teacher who recognized the limits, limitless potential of every human being regardless of their background. And whereas we affirm our support for educational and social service institutions that empower our children and inspire persons of all ages. And whereas we call upon all residents of Hingham to increase their energy and dedication to the education of our youth. And whereas we call upon government officials, educators, volunteers and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter and more hopeful future for all. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2022, Education and Sharing Day in Hingham. I'm prepared to accept a motion on that proclamation.
I will make a motion to proclaim April 12th, 2022 as Education and Sharing Day in the Town of Hingham.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I, so that has been voted this 12th day of April, 2022 by Joseph M. Fisher, William Ramsey and Elizabeth Klein. The second proclamation. Will someone do a proclamation on Earth Day?
Are you doing Earth Day, Liz? Are you doing Arbor Day?
I think I'm Arbor Day.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I thought I was doing Arbor. I'll do Earth. I'm happy to do either one. They're all good. They're all good and they're all important. Okay, whereas the Town of Hingham is part of the global community is participating in Earth Day 2022 and recognizes the environmental challenges faced by all peoples. And whereas it is understood that as citizens of the global community, the Town of Hingham must step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes that will support the management and care of our environment. And whereas environmental education along with awareness helps the citizens of Hingham develop the concern and skills to address the environmental challenges we face. And whereas in recognition of today's environmental challenges, trees will be planted as a symbol to our commitment to the good stewardship of all that is entrusted to our care. Whereas the Town of Hingham pledges, pledges to support environmental and educational initiatives in our community that encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham do hereby proclaim Friday, April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day dated this 12th day of April, tw- 2022.
So then I will, uh, make the motion to proclaim April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day in the Town of Hingham. Is there a second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I approved. And we have the Arbor Day proclamation.
Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Moren proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And trees in Hingham increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Hingham, Massachusetts has been recognized as a tree city, USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, support our town's forestry program and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this 12th day of April, 2022.
So Liz, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
And I'd make a motion to proclaim April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I, we are approved. All three proclamations. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be, um, appointments and we do not have any appointments to make, uh, this evening. Although I believe that we are scheduling, uh, interviews, uh, so that we will have some appointments coming up shortly. Next is public comment for items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who have public comments? I am not seeing any. So we move to town administrator, select board reports. Tom, I will begin with you.
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
And Michelle.
Yes, so our lovely 2022 warrant should be showing up in everyone's mailboxes this weekend. Wanted to thank Sharon Perfetti for all of the work that she put in putting this together. We were going for a nice springish color and light yellow was the only color available due to supply chain issue. So that worked out. But this should be in everyone's mailboxes this weekend. So please look for it for some school vacation reading. Thank you.
And Art.
I think he just had another meeting he had to jump to.
Okay. Liz Klein.
Nothing to report, Joe. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
I do have a, a report here. I was asked to, um, mention that the Weir River Estuary Park Committee in conjunction with the Straits upon watershed association and the Weir River Watershed Association holds an annual Earth Day cleanup around the border of the Weir River Estuary. And this year's cleanup will take place on, oh, one second. Will take place on April 23rd, 2022 from 9:00 AM to noon. They've asked, uh, if anybody wants to come out and volunteer to please come out and do it. Again, it's April 23rd, 2022 from 9:00 AM to noon.
Bill, do they need to call anyone advanced or just show up?
Uh, just to show up.
Okay, great. And I have, uh, nothing to report this evening. So Michelle from Harbor Media, you are still here. We appreciate all your support. And I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I, we are adjourned. Thank you all.